We have the right to the opportunity to live in a free country where we can make our own decisions. We ask your blessings on this council, and we ask your guidance over the decisions that we make. We ask you to watch over our servers now and when as they protect our freedom and the safety of horses as they protect our city. This will be our end.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Rule call.
April.
Here.
Heathley.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Johnson. Kelly.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to be excused for the adoption of Johnson. Motion second, excuse Mr. Johnson, all papers say aye. Aye, both say aye. Mr. Johnson has been excused. He may be joining us any moment now. He was at some work yesterday or so. He may show up. We now need approval of the events of August the 19th and also of August the 29th. Go through it. Motion second. All papers say aye. Aye, both say aye. Motion carried, events go through. Question appointments, there's none. Special orders of committees, where covers?
Mr. President, I have a proclamation this evening to recognize the Mid-Ohio Food Bank for their services to the City of Heath and to Licking County, and want to proclaim September of the City of Heath as hunger action month. We have Chuck Moore from Licking County. Chuck, please join me down the front there now. I'm reading the proclamation. And if you'd be so kind, maybe just to talk a bit about the services that are provided in Heath and in Licking County at that degree. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the City of Heath, Ohio, to recognize occasions and organizations of outstanding significance. Whereas the Mid-Ohio Food Bank has been fighting hunger in our communities since 1980. Whereas on a daily basis, Mid-Ohio Food Bank fills its mission statement to end hunger one nourishing meal at a time and to co-create a sustainable community where everyone thrives. Whereas 13.3% of the citizens of Licking County deal with food insecurity on a daily basis. Whereas on Thursday, September 5th, 2013, our citizens are encouraged to wear orange, the color of hunger, to raise awareness of the rising demand for the services and support of the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. Now therefore I, Mark D. Johns, Mayor of the City of Heath, Ohio, do hereby proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wood, please.
Yeah, I'm Chuck Moore with the Food Pantry Network. We service this area via Mid-Ohio Food Bank. Basically, in Licking County, we serve about 38 communities, low-income churches who provide low-income food all the way up to like the Yes House and other organizations to deal with low-income families. One of the biggest things that we've just taken on, have just taken on this past summer is providing six produce markets around Licking County to low-income families. We know that healthy food is an issue within Licking County. We know it is across the nation, making sure the kids have fruit, fresh fruits and vegetables. So over the past six months, we ran through Thanksgiving, we're distributing about 20,000 pounds of fresh produce or day that we get into within the Licking County area. A lot of those residents from Heath are able to also come and take them. So we thank you, we thank the city for their support as well as all the businesses and different organizations within the City of Heath as well as Licking County for their support. Allow us to be able to offer free food to those who need it here in Licking County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, I agree. That's fine. That's why I figured I'd go ahead and have you make your comments now. Thank you. Take care. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business? None. Petitions communication?
As a memo, we're going to go with the utility accounts listed below. Utility accounts are views of 98th in accordance with Chapter 95.08 of Ordinance 37, 2006. This information is submitted to council and will be forwarded to the order of Licking County.
Mr. Morrow. Motion second. All papers say aye. Aye. Both say aye. Motion carried. Next memo.
It's from the Planning Commission, the government of Ordinance 74, 2014, on the 20th, 2014. Planning Commission approved the rezon property located at 675 Heath Road, the Delphile from M2 to R2 and agreed to waive the public hearing.
Okay. We will set our public hearing for council to be on Monday, October 7th at 7:20. Mr. Johnson, anything else on that?
No, no.
Mr. Henry.
Second motion, we filed, we're seeing filed communications.
Motion second, receiving file, all papers say aye. Aye, both say aye. Motion carried. That brings us to visitor section. Any visitors like to speak, approach voting. Seeing that, no visitors. We'll move on. Committee reports, finance, budget, history.
Mr. President, please give the brief of the evening. Four legislative requests. First one appropriate 19,000, 296, for change to work from the place of the fuel station in the place of the plant. Second item, request for lock wall reinforcement along the sandstone on both sides of the road. Stay right there, please, inside of the city limits. Third item appropriate $53,000, $100,000 capital improvement fund. Here in contract with Smith Group to replace the water park pool. Fourth item appropriate $10,000 for capital improvement fund to install purchases Skylight for the water park. Other items, Aubrey Alexander reported eBay sales, Mr. Parker, 30 miles, put in $1,063,77. He also shared with us a photograph of the changes on the rest of the casual insurance. He's doing for the city. I'm not here, Kim Geller, anything to add?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Susan White. She's a clerk to our tax office. She's just celebrating her one year service with us and we're glad to have her. She's done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Public services, Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee, Mayor of Orange, 26530, delinquent utility accounts were discussed over the council. The wastewater, there are a pot run, leak station update. The third is a warning is done and hope to be completed by late September. Plastic pipe and snap-on connectors are being used, they're efficient and cost-effective. Nick Ross is still inspecting the job. A pipe problem occurred but was discovered before they were installed and three or four manholes will be installed. Water department, Mr. Geller gave a water plant update, making good progress and target completion date in March 2004. The line silo is being cleaned, one clarifier cleaned and the second bay built where the two smaller ones are being moved. We will add the 4 million gallon capacity, current usage averages 1.3 million gallons with a midsummer usage of 1.8 million. Plenty of room for growth. State Route 13 improvements are moving right along, hope to be done by mid-September. A brief discussion was held concerning water line expansion. Finally, Matt Fosher, Mike is chanting. Nothing else, or anything else, Mr. Geller?
I would also like to recognize Jack Brown is the superintendent of wastewater plant. Jack has 12 years of service with the system. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Johnson in here, so Mr. Heathley will...
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee meeting will meet next Monday, September 9th at 5:30 p.m.
Trouble were numbered. Thank you. I have, also have an employee named Love, who's been here for seven years, celebrating his anniversary this month. Thank you.
Chief Shepherd.
About three anniversaries, point thanks, Jim Crozier and Jason Black. That's all.
That's all, Mr. President. Thank you. Streets and drainage, Mr. Heather.
Streets and drainage will meet Monday, September 16th at 5:30 p.m. Bob, you have anything to add?
Yes, we have three anniversaries in the street department and then Swingwell's been there for 15 years and Dana Snyder's been there for 12 years. That's it. That's all.
Thank you. Community development zoning, Mr. Henry.
A clean thing tonight at 5:30. And I had a talk with a lot of the citizens, I think I'm a warrior with our street student. Geller was there to tell us about the new kids, who they separated. There'll be more detail on this. And in August 7th, we had a gentleman here at our meeting that was planning about, he worked planning by trash container locations, they believe about streets. And so Johnson, he would check it out and get back to us. So this time he said, and checked at Newark and Dublin all out. They both had orphans and Reddale and Tassie don't. For the review, it's harder, it's harder than us to administer and control and just general consensus. So number three item was a necessary request by ODOT to install a rock wall enforcement alone. From 13, vicinity of the radio station. And that 13 served in 2016. And I don't remember the details.
ODA is concerned about rock formations that blew above State Route 13 and vicinity of the radio station. So they want to put reinforcing rods into the rock to open and place there. They anticipate doing that at the same time that they repaste State Route 13 in a couple of years.
In a year, two thousand and fifteen.
Yes.
Thanks, John. You know, John also informed us that the 13 will be opened by the end of September, we're hoping to be heard. They're moving along the table. Number four item was a necessary request for 2014, PWC funding for farm wood. Drive of top practical sense of budget being made in January 2014. The construction beginning on April 1st, 2014. So if the funding would be in wait, the action actually has completed. It was best awaited to involve 2014 request of PWC funding. Hope well, many digging projects, that's the goal, have one project that's like a project. Okay, and a small retention pond in World Ridge was north of way six weeks ago during a heavy rain. And it's just was a replacement pond installed by AEP due to AEP's accidental withdrawal of the original pond during construction project last year. And so AEP has agreed to assist in its snow and a new replacement pond. Here, John, John will update with AEP to secure this work as soon as possible. And the burnwood drive west maybe is being delayed until October, starting one side from farmwood drive, older requests. And what it will be, they could be pulled between shells of farmwood. And if the guy in there will be replacing the core located 200 feet south of the intersection, the secondary road prior to the given four to five base project. And John gave a lot of credit to Jenna, who had to... Danny Goff, who converting to this, all resolving the part of the application into try to get one interactive one. Be able, be needing to submit for various documents, whatever about this. Which is the plans for it, a lead-up, a limitation on that's a heat flow and structure. So that James Parkway will under review and the on experience door is under construction, it's going to be spread. Southgate Corporation, they started today, they're on the spec building in front of San Francisco. The on floor, on this, all ready. And I'm not saying it's out. And a resident requests that the city consider boosters, signs that the dog walk can clean up after the pass, don't have a central out of there. Also, John gave a report on the playground foot, it's getting up, it's on this foot, it's plenty of money. It's successfully made money to buy all new playground foot for the young park. It's here, where it gets all and that work, the logistics and structure, I mean, the mayor is working with some students. People on the projects, get the community involved, help them do some of their labor on this project. And the rest of this week, John said, this department, we've helped a little bit, started to do better on that set of nine. Any things, John?
No, thank you. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, David Shea.
I'm thinking to President Park Recreation, David Shea, Monday, September 16th, immediately follow streets and bridges.
So that's probably against it.
No, I don't. But thanks, Brad.
And planning commission, Mr. Creighton.
Mr. President, planning commission actually met twice this month of August, so 20th, we have pre-aided new business. For the lots closed, plenty of drives, straight out, just in two lots, and they hanged it, go straight up the road. Resumes 675 Heath Road, down in the intersection of Heath Road and Drive, more tins on persistent living facility. For the sketch plan for Southgate Spec Building, James Parkway. Rolls business, final review from Robinson Construction Corp., building site and drive to expand their facility. There's a special meeting last Friday, the 29th. Prove in lots, fit for the heat floor, Licking County Port Authority, property on James Parkway. Mr. Roth, anything to add?
No, thank you.
You're John.
I just want to say thanks to the planning commission members for being flexible and willing to hold special meetings to accommodate time schedules to encourage further business growth in the city. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all the committee reports. Brings us to international ordinances, Order 76, 2013.
Order 76, 2013, and ordinance authorizing the appropriation of $1,096,000 within wastewater replacement fund to cover a changeover to Jarrow Valley Excavating Inc., to switch from direction boring to jack and board to replace two fuel stations.
Order 76, 2013, to have a second reading. Order 77, 2013.
Order 77, 2013, and ordinance creating payables and setting schedules, repealing Ordinance 76, 2012, declaring emergency.
President, Mr. Creighton.
Motion to suspend the rule, Order 77, 2013.
Motion second, suspend the rules, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole. Yes.
Rules have been suspended. President, Mr. Creighton.
Motion adopted, Order 77, 2013.
Motion second to adopt, Order 77, 2013. Any questions or comments?
Just question. I was there to discuss, I was skipping it and I wasn't sure I understood exactly. I thought about in the first section, they raised this based upon percentage of black rain as on present council. And in section two, it talks about air rate, more than one more thousand dollar rate, and one pound to not be verified from the party. I'll say change, John. So is $1,000 separate from the normal favorite, or is that the $1,000 maximum number of heads in the league, if that's clear or if I'm saying?
That language isn't changing, right? No, that front part, that language isn't changing, that's what it currently is. But, yeah, I know. The only thing I had on is that American give, have, because that's different than...
That's what I was assuming.
Yeah, but the normal rates.
Because the way I read it is...
Yeah, this would be like a...
Almost like a American kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
But the way I read it is saying that they bring a more than one $1,000. I guess you're saying he, um, like the other ones are maybe...
The American, you know, they do the thousand.
Alright.
But that isn't, isn't changing for the, what's actually changing is also backwards, it's getting...
Yeah, the addition of the utilities collection supervisor and the assistant auditor action on classified weekly to red, right? And ran, the payment is updated, that's part of this? Maybe not this, I can't remember.
Well, I didn't compare it to, I just had a good schedule, I was gonna put it in.
Okay.
I didn't compare it to it.
Okay. That says it. Any other questions, comments? Seeing that, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Order 77, 2013 has been adopted. That's all the ordinances on the first reading, come to ordinances on second reading, Order 69, 2013.
Order 69, 2013, and ordinance authorizing the appropriation of $20,000 within the general fund to police services to cover anticipated short-term vehicle repairs.
Mr. President, Mr. Johnson. Second. Motion second, any comments or discussion? Seeing that, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Order 69, 2013 has been adopted. Order 70, 2013.
Order 70, 2013, and ordinance authorizing the transfer of $3,000 to the general administration services to general administration capital admin for just a new computer for the Heath City auditor and other unspecified items.
President, Mr. Creighton.
Motion adopted, Order 70, 2013.
Motion second, any comments or discussion? Seeing that, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Order 70, 2013 has been adopted. Order 71, 2013.
Order 71, 2013, and ordinance authorizing the appropriation of $1,233,000 and maybe extends within the ongoing license tax fund in return to Licking County treasurer.
Mr. President, Mr. Heather.
I make a motion to adopt Order 71, 2013.
Motion second, any discussion, comments? Seeing that, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Order 71, 2013 has been adopted. Order 72, 2013.
Order 72, 2013, and ordinance authorizing the appropriation of $1,225,038 within the general fund to service services to replace the drinking fountain in the police department.
Mr. President, Mr. Johnson. Second. Motion second, any comments or discussion? Seeing that, roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Order 72, 2013 has been adopted. Order 73, 2013.
Order 73, 2013, and ordinance approving community reinvestment area tax agreement for national industrial lumber, 1735 James Parkway, Delphile, 43056.
Mr. Henry. Motion second, any comments or discussion? Roll call.
April.
Yes.
Heathley.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Order 73, 2013 has been adopted. Resolution, that's all the ordinances on second reading, resolution on the first reading, there are none. Resolution on the second reading, there are none. Brings us reports to city officials, Mary Alex.
Mr. President, I guess the only thing I'd like to say this evening other than talking to the visitors is, as was reported to council earlier this evening in committee, Southgate Corporation has begun societal preparation for spec building to be built on James Parkway in front of what is the existing Seagull Strapping Building there at the end of Kaiser Drive. And I just want to express my appreciation and, I mean, the city's appreciation for the efforts of Southgate Corporation, Port Authority, grow Licking County, Edom Feltman CIC in Licking County, and to the other partners the city has had in the past and continues to have as we all work to try to bring more jobs to the city, more blue collar, more living wage jobs. And I hope soon that spec building will be filled with tenant. It will produce some great products, supply some great employees in the heat of Licking County. Yep. That's all I got.
That's okay. I'm going to Alexandra, she's not here tonight, so we'll move on to my director of sports.
Thank you. Mr. President, I don't, the only thing I like to say tonight is I expressed my condolences to council and mayor.
Start, start down far in, Mr. Creighton. New report. Mr. Henry. Mr. Stone. Mr. Johnson.
It's one of the everybody. Hey, I'm sorry.
Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations to Jack Brown. He's such a long time. Come. Once again, the word, um, and the council, words of support.
Mr. Heather. Leonard, anything to add? Um, start down below, John Geller here tonight.
I'm going to assist him tomorrow, and other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Kim Geller.